Well, good after- or good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. Um, welcome. This is the Sparks Planning Commission meeting of, uh, August 1st, 2019. We want to welcome everyone here in the chambers, everyone watching on Sparks Centennial Television and on the Internet. Um, we have a pretty short a- agenda, um, and a- and a lot of interest in tonight's meetings. I think that's- that's- that's good. Want to remind everyone, please silence your- your- your cellphones and, um, try to limit distractions as- as much as possible. We'll get- we'll get through this, tonight's agenda. Um, first item on- on the agenda is call to order. We did that. Um, second item is, uh, roll call. You can call it a roll, please, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Blakeau?
Here.
Commissioner Rock?
Here.
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 Commissioner Vanderwell?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison Moreman?
Here.
Assistant County District Director Arlo Gonzalez?
Here.
Okay, thank you for that. Pleased to have a full commission for tonight's meeting. Um, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any, uh, um, subtractions or- or changes?
You skipped public comment.
Oh, my gosh, I did. Boy. Thank you very much for that. We'll go back up to item number three. That- that's public comment. This is our general public comment, um, portion of the agenda. You can talk about anything, um, on the agenda or not on the agenda. We will have an opportunity for a public hearing for item number seven. That's the conditional use permit for- for the car wash. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to provide a general public comment? Okay, come on, come- come-
For the car wash?
No, this is- this is a general public comment. There'll be another public hearing for that item. You're- you're welcome to, if you'd like to, to make another public comment. So we just ask that you, for this public comment period, you know, state your name and address for the record. And you'll have, uh, up to three minutes.
Commission- Commission members, thanks very much for this opportunity. Uh, great country we live in where we can come and speak about things. My name is Wesley Griffin. My address is forty-seven oh-one Weddiken Road. I live, uh, within five hundred feet of this proposed, uh, car wash. We have a, um, a neighborhood, uh, that, uh, enjoys, uh, a certain amount of peace and quiet. It's being disturbed, uh, greatly by the school that's being added to the area. It's going to increase our traffic. We've got ever-growing traffic from, uh, from all the growth out in, uh, Spanish Springs. Uh, we're concerned about traffic on- on Weddiken Road. We like access. We have, for years, uh, had access to McCarran, being able to turn left or go straight across. Many of the things that I enjoy in the city of Sparks are in downtown Sparks. And so having access to being able to head, uh, I guess it's east on, uh, on McCarran, uh, is very important to us. We also, uh, are concerned about noise. We're concerned about lights at night. We're concerned about, um, the, uh, how this will change the character of our neighborhood. Uh, the, um, uh, Trucking Metal Regional Plan talks about, uh, trying to maintain character of neighborhoods. So, we are very concerned about how this will affect the character of our neighborhood or affect- how it will affect our lives. We're concerned about somebody- now, this property, uh, this change is supposedly, um, for a conditional permit. That doesn't seem very straightforward to me. Seems to me like if somebody wanted to do this, they'd need commercial. In fact, it sounds almost like light industrial. That is not in keeping with the character of our neighborhood. It could depreciate our property, our values, our peace, um, have a, uh, uh, very, uh, unsettling, um, uh, addition of stress to our lives. We're very much concerned about this. You would be too, if somebody was suggesting that they put something like this in your residential neighborhood. We all would. I encourage you to really take into consideration that. We're the people on our side of the street. People on the other side of the street do at least have a sound barrier. There's an apartment house and they don't really, you know, they don't really care a whole lot. So, we're the ones that are being impacted. And not only us, but everybody to our- to our east. We were not given- we didn't know, uh, we don't- we're not given much advance notice and very few people were. Uh, if, you know, I mean, obviously you people have to do what you feels best, but I can assure you, if this passes, we will appeal it. And we'll have a lot more people than just a few people here, you know, voicing their opinions too. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Wesley. Appreciate that public comment. Is there any other, uh, members of the public that'd like to provide public, general public comment? Got one coming to the podium. If- if there's another, you're welcome to- we have two seats we could fill up.
Well, hello, everyone.
Back.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Darlene Hesse, thirty-three-five Malapie Way, and I live right off of Whittican. And I'm here representing about, uh, ten people that I talked to. I brought three letters in and they're- I believe they're going to be sending in, uh, more letters also to complain about this. But they want me to, uh, talk on behalf of them too, to say how concerned we are about the traffic. We're going to have that new school. And I tell you, uh, that- that poor, uh, McCarran is just overloaded right now without even the school. Uh, I don't know if you guys get stuck in that traffic in the morning. It's horrible. And I don't understand, yeah, if it's going to be, uh, entry from McCarran or entry from Whittican. You don't ask the question like that, right? I can't ask that question.
We- we can have- we can have staff address that in the presentation.
Yeah.
We'll go over- we'll go over the traffic.
Okay, I'd like to find out about that. But we're all very, very concerned. And I, uh, we've lived there forty-one years. Uh, I believe it's a beautiful area. I'm sorry that the school has to go there because I don't think that's right, but, uh, the- the traffic is our main concern. Everyone that I called today, they said, "Be sure and talk about the traffic. Talk about the traffic." Because the traffic is unbelievable. And I don't think that it's going to bring that much tax money to the, um, uh, Washoe County- to the city of Sparks because it- it would be a car, uh, uh, to wash your cars. And I don't think there's that many people that really work there. It would be much better if it stayed, be in office and, uh, the people come in, they work in the day and they leave at night. That would just be the best, uh, way, I think. And it would help, uh, McCarran and- and the people of Sparks and Reno so very much. Well, thank you for listening to me and I'm- I'm really sorry about more of this idea, but thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. You have another, uh, public comment? Just, uh, your name and, uh, address for the record.
George Lee, um, thirty-five oh-six Brassy Drive. I put in a card with, uh, the secretary.
Okay, thank you.
I'm concerned about the fact that, uh, they're going to eliminate left turns and straight throughs for Whittican to go- for people to go down Whittican. They come out of Whittican from their residential area. Sorry. That's hard. From their resi- [laughing]. From their residential area and, uh, uh, they're going to have to go up and make a U-turn at Sullivan to get over there to go down that area. This is, um, something that RTC should not accept, the idea of changing that. Either put a- put a stoplight in there so that people can go across that and can make left turns out of there and not have to make U-turns at Sullivan, which with the high school is going to be murder. You know, with that, the traffic, trying to make a U-turn up there. And, I mean, so it's eighty cars. When do the eighty cars come? During rush hour. They don't come just in the middle of the day or, uh, maybe some do. But the point is, is, uh, the real traffic and the- the mental imagery of, "Oh, I'm driving down the road. Here's a car wash." Uh, you know, the, uh, opportunity is there for the people who are commuting, the people who are traveling on there. It's not something that's you- uh, you might think of on a Saturday afternoon or something because you don't want to wash it at home. But the point is, um, it needs to have that left turn out of Whittican to go east on McCarran. And, uh, I think that that's not in their plans. That's not in RTC's plans, apparently, because they worked with RTC, apparently, according to the information that I had. Uh, that is... I don't think that's acceptable. I mean, we've got enough going on with the high school there. Not the battleship, as, uh, Mr. Peterson called it. Am I out of time yet? Oh, I have got fifty-five seconds. Cool. Uh, this... What's happening is basically we're turning this into the corner of Sutro and McCarran, which is a high school, a convenience store, gas station, uh, some other, uh, place like that, you know? And I don't think that Mr. Conforti, when he donated the properties to the county, uh, had this in mind. It's supposed to be unbuildable because of the- the expanding clay that's under that area. So.
Thank you very much. You finished on time. You turned on time. Okay, we'll sit.
Uh, I'm Chris, Chris Fields. I live at forty-eight twenty Weddiken Road. And I've been in contact with NDOT, Washoe County, and I'm still in the making of contacting City of Sparks concerning the traffic on Weddiken Road. The unfortunate thing is it's very hard in- on Weddiken Road in our little neighborhood. Only portion of it is, uh, responsible by the City of Sparks. A very even smaller section is Washoe County, which my house fronts, and then the rest of it is NDOT. And to have signs or on either end have to be coordinated with both City of Sparks and with NDOT. And I've talked to, uh, Washoe County and their section's so small and they're in the middle of the road that they don't have any thing they want to talk about because it's responsibility of Sparks on one end of the street and NDOT on the other. And Washoe County is in the middle. We don't care. But, uh, uh, speeding through the neighborhood is absolutely atrocious. It is horrible, especially in front of my house. I'm in a curve area and a dip in the road. Any vehicle can lose control when they're traveling westbound if they're not paying attention and, uh, drive into my fence or into a tree. It's very easy to do. I also think in the evening time, people are avoiding McCarran Boulevard thinking, psychologically in their mind, that they can, uh, avoid, uh, the police on McCarran, uh, on McCarran Boulevard by just going down Weddiken Road. And the beer bottles and beer cans that are thrown out the window that I pick up on the side of the road [laughing] is, uh, crazy. You know, at- the same brand too, so I think it's the same person. But, uh, I would have looked into requesting signs on either end, uh, responsibility for the City of Sparks and NDOT on the other side, to put in a sign for, uh, local traffic only, to lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour, and to, uh, put in a sign that, uh, restricts commercial traffic. Because, uh, a lot of my na- I work early in the morning and I'm up early in the morning. And to see the commercial vehicles going down the- the street to avoid McCarran Boulevard when the traffic's light makes no sense. Uh, on their way to, uh, fill the supermarkets and, uh, points, uh, north to Walmart and Save Mark and everybody else, it's strange, even cement trucks. Why do they go down that street? I have no idea. But, uh, uh, thank you for this comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any other, uh, members of the public who'd like to provide a general public comment at this time? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Clem. We live at fifty-six fifty-five High Rock. We're on the corner of Whittican and High Rock. We're close to the road. The traffic is horrendous. At least having McCarran and Pyramid reconfigured has helped us a lot, but we still have a lot of traffic. But my- I'm concerned about the traffic and an increase, not only for a car wash, but people still traveling yet. But we're talking about a car wash being granted a change in zoning when there are three car washes within half a mile of that presently. There's a car wash in the Raleigh Shopping Center, at Tyler and Pyramid, right around the corner. It's a do-it-yourself one. And a new car wash has recently opened on the other side of Pyramid where the new storage center is. And there's many bays there. To me, granting, uh, variance or a change in zoning should be for something substantial that is not available in the area, something that's bringing something that is valuable to the area that's not readily available. I wondered if whoever's doing the car wash, when they did their due diligence to present to you, if the new car wash, the big suds and whatever it is, was completed at that time or if this is something that was done previous to that and having that new car wash just around the corner, within walking distance, really, has changed the dynamic of the situation and would influence how you're going to vote. I also feel with the school right there, the increased traffic, the day and nighttime activity with, uh, car wash will detriment the entire neighborhood. I think that those are things that you should look into and really consider before you grant it. Having, uh, business office building there, to me, makes more sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Another public comment? Uh, name and address for the record, please.
I'm John Capero. I live at four-eight-two-five Weddiken Road, which is just up from and across the street, the Mormon Steak Center. I have two issues they've already been brought up. One is noise pollution. And I read all hundred-and-twenty-eight pages of the document and I have, uh, I guess a critique of what the staff did. They talked about, well, the noise pollution from the blower on the tunnel and the, I think it's eighteen possible vacuums, it's not going to be affect anybody because you've got traffic on McCarran. That isn't always the case. Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, Sunday, you're going to pick it up, the noise. Wes Griffin lives at four-seven oh-one. He's eye-shot. He's right there. You're going to hear it. The second issue I have is that there's no discussion in any of the- this- in the documents about the effect of traffic, of people coming out of the car wash, turning right onto Weddiken Road and going to, um, Far Lane to get back onto Pyramid Lake Highway. I read the charts. It talks about left turn, right turn, straight ahead. You try to ascertain from what all that data is and y- you can't pull out. There's no discussion. It's like the staff didn't care about the possible impact of traffic on Weddiken. The residents along Weddiken have fought with the City of Sparks, Washoe County, and the Department of Transportation for years, trying to find a way to get traffic off of Weddiken. The project at Weddiken and, uh, McCarran and Pyramid has helped, but we're starting to see people starting to slide through because they don't want to take the time. My house, I come down, if I take a left to go north, northeast out of my driveway, I'm right on a curve. It's a blind curve. I start out, I pull trailers in and out of there all the time. I can't tell you how many times I've almost had someone hit me in the back because they're coming faster than the advisory twenty-five. Like, it's a single finger salute and then they drive right on my bumper all the way to Far Lane and then they go by me. This is, you're going to- you're asking to put into this area a high automobile intensive business. They're talking about, I think it was seventy-eight vehicles per hour at peak. That's a lot of vehicles. If you look at the traffic flow pattern that they show, all the traffic's got to go out on the north side of this piece of property and either turn right on the Weddiken or left on the Weddiken to go to McCarran and go west, or they will go right and they'll go down to Far Lane. It's just untenable what you're going to do to us if we put that in there. It's unsafe and I would ask that you really- I'd like to know how many actual people are going to make that left- that right turn and going on Weddiken. I'd like to have that in the discussion period during the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do we have any other, uh, general public comment? There- again, there will be an opportunity, um, during the- when we- we open up- open up that item. Okay, see no more public comment. I'll close this public comment period. My apologies for skipping it in the first place. Um, we'll move on to item number four. This is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell to approve the agenda. Is there a second on the motion? Heard, uh, Commissioner Reed with- with the second. Um, any questions or, uh, discussion concerning the- the motion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you for that. We'll move on to, uh, item number five, which is approval of the minutes. The first, uh, batch of minutes is our, um, June fourth Planning Commission Study Session Minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
I move to approve the minutes of the June fourth Planning Commission Study Session.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes, the study session by Commissioner Vanderwell. Is there a second on the motion? Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Reed. Um, any questions or discussion concerning the- the motion? Okay, all- all those in favor of approving the study session minutes, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. Um, next up is, uh, uh, minutes from the June sixth Planning Commission Meeting. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve.
Saw your arm moving.
Move to approve the minutes of the June sixth Planning Commission Meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell to approve the minutes of June sixth. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll make it three for three. Uh, Commissioner, um, Commissioner Reed with- with the second. Is there any, uh, questions or discussion on- on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the June sixth Planning Commission Meeting minutes, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. Move on to item number six, and this is, uh, informational items. Do we have any informational items?
We do not. I'm joined.
Okay. And, um, you know, i- in case anyone would like to join us for our next meeting, I think that's going to be the first, uh, meeting in- in- in September. We do meet the, uh, Thursday nights, so anyone's welcome to- to join. Okay, we'll move on to the meat of our agenda. That's the public hearing items. First up is, uh, PCN nineteen zero-zero-two-three. This is a conditional use permit for, uh, car wash.
Chairman Carey, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, I'm Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner. So this is a request to construct and operate a car wash on a site at the corner of Whittiken Road and McCarran Boulevard. Uh, you can see this site here outlined in, uh, crimson. Uh, this site has a PO or Professional Office Zoning Designation and a C or Commercial Comparative Plan Land Use Designation. The Planning Commission previously reviewed and approved a conditional use permit for an approximately five thousand six hundred and thirty-nine square foot car wash on this site in twenty-sixteen. Uh, that approval expired in twenty-eighteen because construction was not initiated and the use was not established. Uh, this application has been submitted by a new applicant. Car washes are per- uh, permitted use in the PO zoning district subject to a conditional use permit. The applicant is proposing to construct and operate an approximately four thousand five hundred and twelve square foot tunnel-type car wash on this site. Um, you can see the site plan for that here. Uh, all washing machinery and equipment will be located inside the building. Uh, the plans also include the construction of, uh, carport or canopy areas over the parking areas here and here, um, with vacuum stations. The vacuum equipment, excuse me, will be located in two small structures on the east side of the site, here and here. The applicant has indicated that their proposed hours of operation are eight AM to seven PM, seven days a week. Uh, staff does not believe that can- uh, condition- restricting these hours of operation is necessary to make this a compatible use to the adjacent uses. This site is adjacent to Wild Creek Golf Course to the north and west and office uses to the east. Uh, the only residential use that's adjacent to this site is south across McCarran Boulevard. Noise issues can be a concern with the operation of a car wash, uh, near residential uses. However, uh, the car wash and vacuum equipment will be inside of structures. Um, the nearest, uh, residential was more than a hundred and thirty feet across McCarran Boulevard and there is an adjacent sound wall at that location. Staff believes that the potential noise impacts will be effectively mitigated with the proposed, uh, um, site design and so forth. The landscaping proposed for this application is in substantial compliance with, uh, SMC twenty-point-oh-four-point-oh-six, which is the landscaping and screening section. Uh, we were actually received an updated, uh, colored version of the landscape plan for the site. Uh, required parking for car wash facilities under, uh, Sparks Municipal Code Section twenty-point-oh-four-point-oh-nine is one space for every fifteen-hundred square feet of, uh, of car wash. Their proposed building is four thousand five hundred and twelve square feet, so three parking spaces would be required. The site plan for the proposed car wash shows twenty-nine parking spaces and complies with City of Sparks, uh, requirements. There is no specific stacking distance, uh, required for car washes, but SMC twenty-point-oh-three-point-one-six, uh, requires drive-through restaurants to have a minimum of a hundred and sixty feet of stacking distance. The stacking distance, uh, for this use is approximately six hundred feet. Uh, that's nearly four times required for a drive-through restaurant. Staff believes this is more than adequate for this use. The applicant submitted a traffic impacts study. Uh, the study estimated the average daily trips to be seven hundred and seventy-five, uh, with a PM peak hour trip generation of seventy-eight. Typically, a traffic study is not required for any use, uh, that are estimated to have less than, uh, eighty peak hour trips. However, due to this site being adjacent to, uh, McCarran, which is an NDOT-controlled road, and the request from the applicant to locate, uh, a site access on McCarran with within relatively, uh, uh, near, uh, proximity to the intersection of Whittican and McCarran, uh, staff felt it was reasonable and appropriate to require a traffic study as part of this request. Per that analysis, the additional traffic generated by this use will not have a significant impact, uh, or effect on the level of service at the intersection, um, of McCarran and, uh, and Whittican. Uh, and the applicant's traffic analysis estimated a less than one second per vehicle delay, uh, during the peak hour. Uh, the applicant has been working with NDOT to have their proposed roadway improvements permitted and believes that their proposed site, uh, plan, uh, can be permitted by NDOT. If the Planning Commission approves the site design and subsequently NDOT, uh, denies the ability for them to have the site access from McCarran and the applicant still wants to move forward with this, they would have to come back to Planning Commission, uh, to amend their conditional use permit, to amend the site plan, to remove that access and to reevaluate how this site would work. Uh, staff has proposed, uh, a condition of approval that would require that the applicant submit this to the city documentation of any NDOT permits, uh, required, uh, prior to the issuance of any building permits for the site. Uh, the site- the applicant has submitted, uh, these are, sorry to kind of step back and talk about this. These are some of the, essentially, the- the palette of, uh, materials or trees and plants being used in their landscape plan. Um, the applicant has submitted, uh, building elevations. His building elevations are also in substantial compliance with the requirements for the PO zoning district. As you can see in this, uh, black and white, uh, drawing that they have, uh, articulation along the sides of the building, um, it is a long rectangle as tubed car washes, tunnel car washes tend to be, but they did break that up, um, per, uh, staff, uh, comments, um, on the- on the site, on the building. This, uh, elevation, while it doesn't have all that articulation, does, uh, is able to communicate the- the colors and the palette that the- the applicant would be using on the site for the- the structure. Uh, there's a combination of material- There's a combination of materials being used, which include both split and smooth face CMU, as well as stucco and a corrugated perforated metal panel system. The elevations incorporate a variety of colors including Sierra Spruce and Alpolic Blue. There are five findings related to conditional use permits. Condition one looks at compliance with the Concreant of Plan. This proposal supports goal MG1 by supporting economic vitality by providing a non-residential land use. It supports goal MG4, as this is an infill site. And it supports policy CF1, as the site is in the developed area and city services can be provided at acceptable levels. Condition two requires compatibility with adjacent properties. The site is bordered, if we go back to the site plan, sorry. The vicinity map, the site is bordered by the golf course on both the north and the west sides, by office uses to the east, and by multifamily to the south across McCarran. The site is adjacent to a busy arterial road, and is not anticipated to conflict with the other commercial uses or the golf course. The separation distance and proposed design of the car wash are anticipated to mitigate any potential impacts to the adjacent residential. Condition three looks at the impacts of the proposed development on the natural resources. This site, while undeveloped, has been graded and fenced for many years. City staff does not believe that the approval of this conditional use permit to allow a car wash would impair the availability of natural resources or the region's ability to support its population. Finally, or additionally, there is condition four that requires that identified impacts be addressed. The impacts that staff identified for this project or this proposed use started with parking. Parking requirements for this use is three spaces per code, and they are providing 29, so they are in compliance with the code. The second would be traffic. As has been mentioned, traffic is a potential concern for this site. The applicant is proposing a right-in-only access from McCarran Boulevard, as you can see here, it'd be a right-in-only, and a full movement entrance on Whittaker Road. The additional traffic generated by this use will not have a significant effect on the level of service at the intersection of McCarran and Whittaker with the one second, less than one second delay that I had mentioned earlier being part of that. There is an inaccuracy in the staff report that I was, for me, not understanding the executive summary in the traffic analysis. I had thought that the improvements at the intersection of Whittaker and McCarran were a consequence of the location of the turn-in off of McCarran, and that's inaccurate. NDOT did a, let me get the exact term here, an intersection control evaluation for all of McCarran. And one of the improvements that they had in that intersection control evaluation was the, what's called the worm island. Sorry, skipped through these so fast. Worm island in, or a worm median in McCarran. That's this shape here that allows the left turn off of McCarran, both directions, but doesn't allow left or through. That was an intersection improvement that was required per that intersection control evaluation. And as this is the first bit of construction adjacent to that newly adopted improvement, they are responsible to improve it per NDOT. And so it's not a consequence of this specific use, but the fact that they are constructing after NDOT decided that that's an improvement they wanted at that intersection. So they would be on the hook to build it, but it's not a consequence of their project. As mentioned, staff has proposed a condition that all, that documentation indicating that the NDOT permits have been received be part of, or be required previous to building permits. Additionally, noise is a concern, but as stated, because of the separation from adjacent residential uses and the housing of the equipment, both the car wash equipment and the vacuum equipment inside of structures, staff believes that that sound noise potential can be mitigated for this project. And then the last finding is finding five, which relates to public notice. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 7th, and 98 notices were mailed to owners of property within 500 feet of the subject property on July 17th as in accordance with both state law and city ordinance. The Planning Commission functions as the public hearing required by Nevada revised statutes and the Sparks Municipal Code. Prior to this meeting, staff did receive two emails and two phone calls that were in opposition to this. The emails have been distributed to the Planning Commission. That is the extent of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is also representatives from the applicant here, if there are questions for them.
Okay, thanks Ian for the presentation. Does the commission have any technical questions for staff? We'll have an opportunity after the public hearing to get to your questions, but is there any technical questions about process or, okay?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Commissioner Vanderwell, go ahead.
Ian, I have a question that if the property is kept and a professional office is put on it, will NDOT still require that that worm median be constructed?
Any construction at that location that's adjacent to this needed improvement, NDOT's determined needed improvement would be required to construct it. The first in is kind of their policy, how it's termed, the first thing in adjacent to a needed improvement constructs that improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell. Okay, I think we'd like to hear from the applicant's representative, Ms. Albright, welcome.
Excellent. For the record, Cynthia Albright, Stentec Consulting. Thank you for having us tonight. I'd like to speak to a few things. First of all, the folks who bought the site, they obviously bought the site because it was an entitled and approved car wash before. Blue Wave Car Wash is a family-owned business. The Poland family owns it, a father and son. And they own and operate 34 car washes in California and Texas. They came to Nevada. They really like our area, and they really like to build about five car washes within Washoe County and Douglas County. You know, that's what they envisioned for our area. But they have a very different type of a product. They build with quality materials, as you've seen in the architectural elevations. The sound should be mitigated because they build CMU walls around the enclosed vacuum areas with CMU walls that's accented with the same type of stone that's put on the building. The metal tower that was shown in the elevations, that's kind of their signature piece, it's a perforated metal tower. They have a, kind of a standard operating hours of, you know, eight to eight. They're certainly willing to landscape the site, you know, in greater detail than would be required by code. This is kind of an unusual site, and I don't know if we can put up the landscape plan. You can see it more. So if you look at the east side of the property, if you look at the east side of the property, you see how that's all landscaped. And that's because water from the golf course sheet flows across Whittaker, and it actually sheet flows across this property. There was infrastructure built in McCarran, and a lot of that water does hit that infrastructure, but the overflow actually sheet flows across the site. So none of that portion of the property is developable. We proposed 32 trees on the site. We've made notes on the plans to make sure that the existing two trees that are there are being limbed up and cared for and protected during construction. There's hundreds of different shrubs. All of that landscaping should help not only visually obscure the project, but help mitigate any sound that's generated from the property. I'm going to let Joe speak to the traffic considerations in our traffic study. But I would say that had we not spent so much time working with NDOT, because that was the first thing we did, because the original conditional use permit specifically said you need to satisfy NDOT before you can move forward. So that's where we started, we went with OJ. And the intersection control evaluation study was a direct result of the high school project. And so that's why they were looking at this intersection. And just as Ian said, no matter what goes here, whoever it is, whatever it is, that improvement, the worm would be required because they're viewing the future development. And I certainly empathize with the folks who have lived on Whittaker for a long time. I have friends that live on Whittaker. You know, it's a nice neighborhood. And the fact that the high school is going there, they're concerned about the safety of that intersection, which is why they're requiring this type of an improvement. And Joe can certainly speak to the type of travel movements in and out of this site, because the vast majority of them are not going to be going up Whittaker. They're going to right turn in, and they're going to left turn out, and they're going to go on McCarran. The travel patterns into and out of the car wash is to not really use Whittaker, except to leave Whittaker and get back onto McCarran. But the fact that we've proposed more landscaping that's necessary really should help mitigate any of the sound impacts that would be generated from the property. So I'll turn that over to Joe, if you have specific questions, which I'm sure you do.
Yeah, I think that's good. I think we would like to hear from the traffic expert. We may have a few questions on that, but...
Thank you for the record. My name is Joe McTudis with Stentec Consulting. And I guess first of all, I'm happy to answer any traffic questions you might have. To briefly describe the process we went through, as Cynthia mentioned, we engaged NDOT from the very beginning. The property fronts NDOT right away. We knew an encroachment permit was going to be required, and that was approximately a year and a half ago. And then as through the process of coordination with NDOT, one of the very first things they told us was that intersection control evaluation was being done, and that we would be expected to incorporate some of the safety improvements that were concluded by that study, primarily being the worm island that you see here, restricting left-out movements from Whittaker. Speaking for NDOT, which I have to be careful doing that, but the motivation for that is that on McCarran, they are trying to restrict all left-turn-out movements on McCarran as a whole due to safety considerations and the potential for T-bone accidents. Another example that they use that they've incorporated this on is that Keystone in Reno. Also through coordination with NDOT, they asked for the entry to be entry-only, not an entry and exit on McCarran. And with that being part of their right-of-way, they were within the rights to restrict that. Moving forward, we did a pretty straightforward traffic impact study using trip generation from international transportation engineers references to estimate the traffic, using standard practice for estimating where that traffic comes and goes to, basically to reach the conclusions that we have in the study.
Great, thanks, Joe. Are there any traffic-related questions from the commission? Commissioner Fuehens.
Hi, Joe, Commissioner Fuehens. In your discussions with NDOT, where on the McCarran right-hand access coming in, how far is the deceleration lane going to be coming? Is it going to be starting in front of the dental offices and possibly all the way back to the church? Or how far are you planning on going back? Are you going to be looking at getting any easements on for that deceleration line?
It's a very short deceleration lane, as you can see there. During our discussions with NDOT, we, our initial approach was to give it as much deceleration as we possibly could, which included in front of the dental offices. One of the limiting factors is right there where the deceleration lane ends. Actually, I can point to it. There is a major drainage structure. It's huge. It's a pretty significant box culvert. It's directly across from this DI. And so the deceleration lane needed to avoid that in order to avoid reconstructing that drainage structure and a significant drainage facility all the way up McCarran Boulevard that I'm not even sure we could reconstruct. And so in coordination with NDOT, they agreed that that drainage structure shouldn't be reconstructed as part of this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
I have one. So far, you've stressed a great study on traffic on McCarran, which I thought so. How intense was the study of the release of traffic onto Whittaker?
So we did go and do actual traffic counts to get the actual traffic numbers using Whittaker. We sent our staff out with counters on a typical day and captured that traffic. We only looked at the intersection of McCarran and Whittaker. That was per scoping discussions with both NDOT and City of Sparks. So we didn't analyze other intersections on Whittaker, if that's what you're asking?
Oh, just your release off of that car wash onto Whittaker. How much of an intensive study have you done on Whittaker's traffic flow, including your release?
So we did add in traffic generated by the car wash. And as far as estimating how much of that traffic utilizes Whittaker, which I think you're, we're anticipating the car wash traffic to utilize Whittaker?
It's got to utilize it one way or the other, right?
It does. So based on my understanding of your question, we assigned a trip allocation of all the people leaving the car wash onto Whittaker, with the majority of that traffic going to McCarran. And that's based on our estimate of where the customers for that car wash are going to be coming from and to, which is primarily from McCarran.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
I'm going to follow up on Commissioner Peterson's question. So I think what Commissioner Peterson also wants to know is how many more cars are going to touch Whittaker? What's the impact of going through your car wash on a daily basis? How many cars are going to impact on Whittaker? Not that they're going to use McCarran or Whittaker, but we're going to have cars that are going to touch Whittaker.
Correct. So we estimate that there will be 39 vehicles in the peak hour using the car wash. With Whittaker, the Whittaker entrance and exit being the only exit for the car wash, all 39 of those in that peak hour would use Whittaker. We are estimating that the vast majority of them will make that left in order to get back out on McCarran. And I believe we estimated only one or two vehicles would use the right turn to go right onto Whittaker when exiting the car wash.
And, Mr. Chair, if I can do a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Did you do a study about how many would do the right-in off of McCarran into the car wash?
Yes, we did. You'll bear with me for one second. I'll look up that exact number. So of those 39, we would estimate that 17 would use the right turn and the right-in-only entrance from westbound McCarran to the car wash. The remainder would come off Whittaker.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Vanderwell. I had a couple of questions, Joe. One, I was curious in terms of the stacking. It was mentioned in the staff report that there's 600 feet of stacking that's in the, for the car wash. How many cars would that hold, 160?
In general, when we're talking about queuing of traffic, we estimate, we estimate that cars are roughly 20 to 25.
Okay.
Space 20 to 25 feet apart.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My other question is, you know, looking at the trip generation manual and your traffic counts, is typically, is a car wash used, does that generate more trips peak hour and throughout the day than an office use would?
For a comparable area?
Yeah.
I would have to look that up to be sure, but yes, I would believe so.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for that, Joe. Commissioner Blakke.
Just to also follow up about the entrance from McCarran. You said that 17 cars of the 39 in the peak hour would be entering from McCarran?
Yes.
So I would assume that's anticipating that those cars would be traveling westbound, and then the other people that would be entering would be traveling eastbound and coming into the car wash.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Blakow. Okay, is Joe off the hook? Okay, I think he is. Thank, thank you, Joe, for now.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open up the, the public hearing on PCN zero zero two-three. Before, I think we had a couple of folks signed in, but before we get to those, I wanted to acknowledge for the record a couple of letters and emails and a handwritten letter we received for the record. The, the first one was, I believe it's from Mike and Anita Berkeley?
Briarly.
Briarly, thank you, handwritten. Thank, so.
He's only an engineer, so.
So the Briarlys, I'll just read this into the record. "We are against a zone change on the northeast corner of McCarran and Whittaker Road. A car wash use would not work at this location." So thank you for the Briarlys for that. We'll make sure that's incorporated in the record. We had a letter from Mr. Andrew Burnett, DVM. He's at fifty-three oh, oh-five Whittaker Road. We also received an email from Ms. Newborough and another email from the Turners who live at forty-six twenty Whittaker. So I wanted to put those on, on the record. I think we have a couple of folks that, that have signed in. Thank you for that. Okay. Appreciate that. So before I start calling up folks, how this public hearing's gonna work, everyone will have up to three minutes to speak. We ask that you keep your comments directed to the conditional use permit that, that, that we're reviewing tonight. You know, we don't need to get too much into the weeds about, you know, previous, previous projects that have come in this area. Let's, let's keep the, let's keep the, the comments directed to the, the use we're considering tonight. You know, if, if we could, let's try to limit the distractions, you know, booing, clapping out and such-and-such after comments are made. There may be some differing opinions, so everyone is welcome to speak, provide their, their comments. So the first one we have is Chris Fields. I know you provided during, but you're welcome to come up and, and speak on this item too. You've got three minutes. And after that is Charlotte. You can come down and fill the chair if, if you'd like. Okay, thanks, Chris, for coming back down.
My last comments were generally in regard to traffic on the street, irregardless of what was gonna go into this site. So now I'll address to concerning the car wash. Mostly it's noise pollution for one during the daytime hours. Even though I'm buffered by other structures directly to the car wash, again, my block would be negatively impacted by the additional traffic going back and forth. You know, the car wash will probably be advertised, of course, it's a business, with coupons and everything else all over the Northern Sparks area. And so people from Spanish Springs patronizing any business would be appropriately be going westbound down our neighborhood from, on, on Whittaker Road from Spanish Springs, going to this project here during the weekend. It's gonna be constant traffic in front of my house. I'm in the Washoe County section of, of Whittaker Road. Only my road is Washoe County. City of Sparks has about four feet of roadway and my house actually sits in the City of Sparks. I am not in Washoe County, so I'm impacted from City of Sparks. I just have a general, I just, I'm against this project. I don't want to see it there. I have always thought of quiet neighbors, including doctors' offices, dentists, or real estate offices. Traffic would be less impacted and there would be little to no traffic on the weekends as, because of the type of businesses that would, would be there. The existing businesses, there's a CPA and a dentist's office adjacent to this project already. Their fences are closed during the weekends and there's no generated traffic, additional traffic. So that'll be my only comments there. I'll let my other neighbors share.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate that. Charlotte, welcome back.
Thank you. Listening to the comments and the study that was done, I was surprised that they did not have any impact about the homes that are really almost adjacent on the other side of Whittaker. There's two or three houses that are almost directly across. When they were talking about the homes that are on the other side of McCarran, they didn't do anything about the ones that are almost right there where they would exit. Also on McCarran, there's very little room to enter into the car wash, it looks like. And I know that after people are stopped at Rock, they take off and their speed increases. It looks like that's a really short distance to be going into the car wash area. And all I could see is car crashes, rear ends. It just seems like that's almost abrupt to be turning right into that. That was all.
Okay, thank you, Charlotte. We appreciate that. Next we have signed in Darlene Hesse and John Hessie as well too. So come on down, Hessies.
Darlene Hessie, thirty-three-five Malapai Way. You know, I didn't even think about this, the noise, but I'm telling you, since we've lived there for forty-one years, it's, the noise is just unbelievable. And I think that this is such a nice property to maintain for offices that, you know, I, I believe that the City of Sparks could make a lot more money with offices and it'd be quiet. It'd be such a, such a nicer thing to have for all of us. It would help the city and it would also help us. I just cannot believe that you're gonna put a car wash in that area. That, that traffic is just horrendous. I mean, it's like nightmare traffic. And to put a car wash in here is just going to add to such a big, huge problem for all of our neighborhood and the people of Whittaker. The cars, unbelievable, the traffic that's on that Whittaker. This, this car wash, it looks like it's beautiful and everything, but that, we have so many other car washes in the same vicinity. Not maybe, Andy Burnett, I think, wrote, "Three Minutes Away" is a huge car wash on Pyramid and the one that's on, on McCarran and Pyramid. Oh, my gosh, we don't need another car wash. We need to have some peace in our lives, I tell you, so we're not all. This is gonna cause a terrible amount of accidents, I'm afraid. I don't see where the people have the offices have ever been able to, to go in from McCarran into the offices and now they're gonna be going from McCarran, Whittaker, McCarran? That's unbelievable. I just sure do not think this is a very, very good idea at all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. John?
Our knees are both, our knees are both bad, so we can help each other. John Hessie and, we're at thirty-three-five Malapai. And we've been through a lot of this stuff with Wild Creek Golf Course and we've looked at all these nice drawings and all these engineer reports and all these things. It looked great on paper, but in actual practicality, sometimes they don't work. For example, this drain down here where the cars come in, that drain has saved McCarran about, about every four years in the flood. Now you're gonna build a golf course, and I know this, I've done the golf course, with all this pavement in it and we're gonna have more water coming through. And if that is not moved, you're gonna have a lot more flooding. And to have a short deceleration lane like that and those cars coming westbound on McCarran at forty miles an hour, I'm an insurance agent, boy, my rates are gonna go up. I know they are because it's gonna have a lot of accidents. Then on the west side of this thing, you come around this corner and head east on Whittaker and you got cars coming out here that don't have the slightest idea where they even are, let alone where they're gonna go. And to have a car wash there, it's a square peg in a round hole. It should stay professional office buildings. It should not, what's a car wash gonna bring us? Some eight dollar an hour, three or four people. It's not gonna generate much revenue for anybody as far as employment. And I, I would rather have the professional building there, the CPA, the dentist, an accountant. But that car wash is just in, in, in the wrong place at the, at the time. It just shouldn't, shouldn't be there. Other than the sound and the traffic and all that, the beautiful trees, the colors, things of that nature, it sounds good, but boy, I'll tell you what, it might look good on paper, but in practicality, it's not gonna work, in my opinion. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, John. Okay, next we have signed in John Capuro and Wesley Griffin. If you guys would like to, to come, come down. Welcome back, John.
Thank you. Just a question. I heard the individual say that he assumed that people traveling east on McCarran and pulling the Whittaker and they go to the car wash, they'd come out, they'd turn left and go to McCarran, turn right, go over a quarter mile to Sullivan and do a U-turn to continue out east. It's not gonna happen. When they were building the intersection of McCarran and Pyramid, we had to fight our way if we wanted to go east. And I used to come down there even early in the morning and if I tried to turn left on McCarran, it was impossible. So I'd do a right and I had to fight my way across the, the two lanes of traffic to get to the stack lane at, at Sullivan so that I could do a U-turn and come right back where I just came from. I'll guarantee you, you might get someone coming in from the east going in there. The first time they go to the car wash, they'll come out, they turn left, they go up and they'll do that whole thing. The next time, they're not gonna do that 'cause they know Whittaker goes down all the way to Far Lane and they can dump right back out on the Pyramid Lake Highway. Even if they're gonna go south on Pyramid Lake Highway, you've got the acceleration lane there at Far Lane, you can jump, you can get across all those lanes. You can still turn left on McCarran. You can do a lot of things with the way they've done it. So I really questioned it when the individual said, "There's only one car's gonna turn right onto Whittaker." And also you have a lot of people who live in Spanish Springs, they use Whittaker right now. If the car wash is there and they know that it's there and they're gonna wash their car on the way to work, they'll come to Far Lane, they'll turn right, they'll go Whittaker, they'll go down, they'll go into the main entrance on the north side of the car wash. They will go through the car wash and then, yes, they will turn left and go McCarran. But they've still traveled through our neighborhood because they're gonna find out it's easier to do. They don't have to fight as much traffic. And it's just gonna stack up and it's gonna be a problem. It's, it, it, it just worries us and worries me especially 'cause like I said, I'm on a blind corner there and they do not. I can tell you that Washoe County has been real good. They put two motorcycle cops up on top there in that straight stretch all the time and they're writing tickets as fast as they can. City of Sparks PD has never done that. They don't care about that stretch from McCarran, Whittaker to where the golf course ends there going up to, across from the State Center. So they get going fast and they come around that curve and Chris has the same problem. He's across the street from me. It's a blind corner. I've almost been hit. So I really am concerned about that traffic. I think it's deemed downplayed from what it really is. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Wesley?
Wesley Griffin, forty-seven oh-one Whittaker Road. One of the things in listening to the comments that concerns me is that what is the possibility here? We're looking at a car wash. We start off with a car wash. If I have a look at all the other car washes around, it usually doesn't end there. A convenience store in there. Put some gas pumps in there. Obviously, this is a business. This is not some kind of charitable organization trying to improve the City of Sparks or, or improve the impact of our neighborhood. This is a business. They're there to make money. More power to them. However, how is that gonna affect us? How is other things? Now, now suddenly, you know, now we start selling sodas and ices and different things, maybe some coffee and, and now we're doing this and we're bringing in extra people for some of these other things. Well, now this is no longer just car wash. This is a lot of other things. So what, what's gonna happen then? They're here to make money. That's what, you know, that's what, that's what it's all about. But how does this impact? We're not even talking about any of that. It's kinda like, we'll get a little toe-hold here with a, with a car wash and then where can we go from there? You know, I mean, this is great. And this is quite a windfall for somebody when they're gonna change a professional office to something that is commercial like this. Actually, I would consider light industrial. Now, one of the things I would say is now if they were going to somehow reduce the noise, there's gonna be some noise. It's not gonna be totally quiet. First of all, it's gonna be open till like eight o'clock at night, I think I heard. Could those hours be expanded? Okay, so now we, now we've got seven days of, of a couple of hours there, plus we've got Saturday and Sunday. Right now, we don't have that. That's impacting our weekends. There's light pollution. There's noise pollution. We take a look at the, at the deceleration and acceleration lines. You look at other places, you know, I know out on Pyramid Lake Highway, I was involved with, with a organization out there that, I mean, they required hundreds of yards for de-acceleration and acceleration. So how are we getting away with this? I mean, this looks like a twenty yards and, and we're up and running. What is that gonna do when people are trying to get, you know, during rush hour? We're gonna have people stacked up further back now trying to get into a car wash? There's all kinds of considerations that I think have not been addressed here. I don't feel like, nothing has been addressed about the traffic on Whittaker and how it's gonna affect our neighborhood. I mean, it looks nice, like John said, it looks nice on paper, you know, so that kinda is. But we all know how these things end up, you know? Come wintertime, all the leaves fall off the trees. It's not all pretty green and, and all these beautiful colors, you know? So, I mean, this looks nice. The other thing too is, you know, the public never even gets involved in this till the very end. We have years of people studying this and coming and talking about it and then here we kinda barely hear about it, two weeks maybe before the meeting's gonna be held. We gotta come, kinda throw all of our, we don't have steady staff.
Thank you, Wesley. Okay, next we have signed in George Lee and Gail Miller. Hope like to speak. Come on, come on down. We'll hear George first.
Can we get this up on the screen?
Do you guys, do you see the?
Site plan?
Yeah.
And you see the landscape?
Yeah, that way you can see it. That's not six hundred feet. I believe that when you did your report, you said like?
George, George, can you, you need to state your name for the record and address and then please direct your comments to the commission.
Yeah. I believe that the staff reported that it was approximately six hundred feet and that looks like not six hundred feet. There's a wall and a fence there that's right up against the, the church and the parking lot of the, they'd have to cut into that. And past evidence has shown that we just apparently don't touch anything with a church on it because otherwise we would've expanded McCarran out wider, you know, past the two choosers. However, that's not what I came to talk about. What I came to talk about is apparently their staff people did not send anybody out there and try to make a right turn at Whittaker and to get onto McCarran because it's not one second. It's one minute to five minutes waiting for traffic to clear so they can make a right turn onto McCarran. That is just mythical, that anybody would even claim that it's only one second. It's, this is a, gonna add a lot of extra right-turn traffic going out onto McCarran. Now, it's true, there is going to be, I believe the high school project said they were going to put a, a deceleration lane that went all the way back to Whittaker, to Whittaker in order to make a right turn onto Sullivan. So there will be that. So there will be that deceleration, but there'll also be people trying to get into that deceleration lane, coming down, you know, coming up west on McCarran. So this is not a one-second thing. This is not, it's not the, I don't know if staff made the mistake, or if it was missed, we also had information that it was supposed to be approximately 700 cars a day, not the 400, that he's talking 39 cars times 11, 12 hours, is not 700. It's, you know, I should say, it's not 400. It's, you know, and we were told that it was gonna be upwards of 700. So, anyway.
Thank you, George. Gail, go ahead.
Hi, Gail Miller. I live at 5200 Malapite Way in Sparks, just off of Whittaker Road. And in order to get in and out of my house, as all of my neighbors and people that live in Village Green, we only have two options. We have to try to come off of Pyramid Highway, and you could sit there, and the cars go by at 50 miles an hour or more, and you shake, or you can try to turn off of McCarran, and you shake there. Cars don't go the 45 miles per hour, they go 50 to 60 miles per hour. And if you are going to be going west and turning into this little driveway on McCarran, you are going to get rear-ended. I can't tell you how many times I've almost been rear-ended trying to turn right off of McCarran going west onto Whittaker Road. It scares me to death. And if you add 775 trips of people going in there off of McCarran somehow, it's just going to be accidents, accidents, accidents. Another place there's going to be accidents is on Whittaker. You've got people coming in and out of that car wash. If they're going to be turning left off, onto Whittaker, people are coming home or going, traveling through, trying to get over to Pyramid, and they turn left as they're going east on McCarran, they turn east onto Whittaker. You come around that curve, you might only be going 20 or 30, you're getting up speed. I see this landscaping here that they're going to be putting in. Believe you me, somebody's gonna get hit there, because I've almost hit people at this lovely little dental office, professional office, which I find very compatible with the area. I would rather have another business that's like that. But I've almost hit a couple of people that try to dart out really fast to go left, and they can't hardly get out, and you slam on your brakes, and you hope, and you're only going 20, 25 right there. Anyways, I really think a car wash is not the right business to be here. It would be better if it was some other kind of professional business, which I do not object to. Also, I was thinking, I looked at the RTC schedule. McCarran is scheduled to be widened at this area from Rock to El Mancho to six lanes, three on each side. It could occur on the schedule, it says, beginning in 2027, it's a possibility going forward. That's eight years. With all of the traffic from the new high school, this may occur in eight years that they start to widen this road. Are they going to then have to take out this little driveway that goes in from McCarran? Are they going to have to come closer to or take out the building? We don't want an abandoned building there that's been built, and no business if they widen the road there. So this is a concern. I also object to the hours of operation. Maybe in the summertime, I could see it, but if they operate till seven in the winter, there are no streetlights there. There may be on McCarran, but there aren't on Whittaker. You won't be able to see cars coming in and out in the dark, which happens by five o'clock. So I object to it in the wintertime. It would be very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to provide a public comment? I don't have anyone else signed in. I want to provide an opportunity for anyone else to provide a comment. Okay? At this point, I will close the public hearing. We'll bring this back to the commission. Does the commission have any other questions for staff on this item? I had a couple. No one else is jumping in here. Ian, I wanted to follow up on the questions I had at the study session on Tuesday. I had asked to see some information about any improvements that are at this intersection that were negotiated as part of the development agreement with Wild Creek High School, and how this, you know, the proposed improvements or with this application, how those affect any improvements from that project. I'd also asked to see pictures or elevations of these vacuum enclosures that were talked about earlier, and I wanted to see if you were able to get any information about the noise levels. I was concerned about the noise levels from the proposed use to the existing uses to the east, and see what kind of information you were able to dig up for me.
Sure. The first question being scheduled improvements associated with the high school at this location and their potential interaction or conflict with those, with this development. At that, this point, there would not be any, to my understanding, there wasn't improvements at this intersection associated with the high school, and the improvements here are what NDOT would want in association. They did their study of the intersections with the idea of the school being in place, and that was part of why this, the proposed improvements at the intersection would be requested. If that were not the case, this use would not be doing any improvements at that intersection.
Okay.
Secondly, sorry, give me your second.
Yeah, the second one was the enclosures for the vacuum areas.
Yes. I put them in here. So these, that's actually the trash enclosure, but the vacuum enclosure is very similar. I'm gonna actually...
Yeah, I thought you handed out something.
No, and we did. You can see them here, they are a combination of both the split face and the smooth CMU that's being used in the elevations of the building. They're used to create the enclosure, as well as a solid corrugated gate on the front to enclose those vacuum stations and to mitigate the impacts of the sound generated by them.
Okay, thank you for that.
I did not have any, an opportunity, potentially, the applicant can speak to this, but maybe not, I was not able to get any information as to the actual volume generated by those. But for the planning commission's information, we, at the City of Sparks, we don't have a, like a noise limit or anything, but we do limit on amplified sound, which would come from like speakers and such, but we don't for just noise generated by the, by, you know, a use. And so while we do try to mitigate that to the degree that we can, we don't have a metric or against which to measure it to say whether or not it complies with standards that the city has set.
Okay, thank you for that.
You'd also asked about the separation.
Oh, yeah, thanks for reminding me, I didn't...
The answer, the answers I did find, I wanted to make sure I got for you. Let's see if we can get this to do what we want it to. So staff, I measured the distance from the enclosures to the adjacent office uses, and it was approximately 130 feet was that distance across there. And then, I think that was the question you presented for me.
Yeah, that was. Okay. I think that's all the questions I had for staff. Did the commission have any other, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
For staff, okay. Well, maybe I can ask Ms. Albright to maybe address the noise, the noise level, specifically what I'm looking for. Cynthia, it's, you know, we have this enclosed vacuum model, and we heard some public comment concerned about the noise. I was just wondering if there was any sort of study or an estimate, you know, given with the enclosures and with the landscaping, what the noise level would be with the office uses to the east?
Cynthia Albright for the records, Dent Tech Consulting. I honestly can't tell you what that noise generation level might be. I can tell you that in the past, in other car washes that have been constructed in areas very similar to this in California, that the noise generated from the vacuum enclosure hasn't been an issue. It's not that loud, and that's why the CMU block wall and the enclosure is around it. The 150 feet coupled with the mature landscaping that's on the side of the dental building itself, plus what we're adding, and you can see from the landscape plan, we've added a lot of trees in that area. We have to be mindful of what we put there, Cynthia, because we know it will flood in occasion, so it's not like we could've really done a lot more than that, and that's why staff had requested that we use a lot of large gravel boulders in that area, because it will sheet flow. But we just don't think that the adjacent dental office would be impacted, even with its 130-foot proximity.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of a tough one for you. You handled it well, thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff, the consultant on this item? Okay, bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action.
I have a comment.
Commissioner Reed, go ahead.
I'm finding that I can't support this proposed project based on findings C2. I don't find that it's compatible with the existing uses of the adjacent properties. I have concerns with the right turn on McCarran and the fact that traffic will be dumped out into Whittaker in the neighborhood, so I am not going to support this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Reed. Mr. Vanderwell?
I too will not be supporting this application due to findings C2 and C4. I believe it does not fit with the neighborhood that is currently there, and then also the traffic impacts. I do live in the Village Green subdivision, so I do understand, and I know the impacts that have happened on Whittaker over the years. My family's had the home for 41 years, so I just don't think this is the right type of business for that spot at this time. I think professional office would possibly be better, so with that, I'm not supporting it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell. Any other comments? Commissioner Blakow?
I'd also like to say that I'm not in support of this, based on finding C4. I feel like the traffic study isn't fully complete. I see, I heard that, he said that 22 peak hour trips would be eastbound, and I just find it hard to believe that only one of those would be going back onto McCarran headed westbound. I feel like that it would cause significant issues there, and also being that making a right hand turn off of McCarran after your car's been wet, and that water shedding off the car there could also pose some significant issues with that being really slippery. I know that, and I'm driving down McCarran, headed into Sparks, I'm passing Sparks Car Wash, or Sierra Car Wash now. I often find my tires are quite slippery around that area, that there's a car wash there, and I could imagine that it'd be the same here. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Blakow. Any other comments from the commissioners or suggested motion concerning this conditional use permit?
I'm sorry, can I add one more thing?
Go ahead, Commissioner Blakow, sure.
I also wanted to agree with the public comment about the car wash potentially becoming a little more than a car wash, even if there's a soda machine installed there. It gives kids a reason to cross McCarran, and I've made myself clear in the past that I feel that that crosswalk is super dangerous. I just wanted to reiterate that as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion or a possible motion? Commissioner Fueens, thank you.
What we, I definitely have heard the public comments. I think staff has done a really good job to even offer, to require a traffic study. This is zone PO, so we're looking at something that is there now, that is coming forth in our city to start a business into our city. It is zone PO, it is zone commercial. When things are zone PO and commercial and a car wash, it's a permitted use within a professional office with the conditional use permit, which I do agree with. I am in favor of all the findings. There's, I'm not thrilled with the deceleration lane on McCarran, but with the improvements that are gonna be done on the NDOT required improvements on the intersection of McCarran and Whittaker, I think that is going, they're needed. NDOT has said they're needed. And traffic, when we're looking at this project, the majority of the traffic is McCarran. McCarran's a very, obviously a very busy street, which is NDOT-controlled. On the prior car wash, NDOT had a lot of say and a lot of input, and I think the applicant has worked with NDOT, according to their testimony today, that NDOT is now coming in favor of the project of the car wash on this site. There's nothing on the site now, it is zone PO, conditional use permit is allowed with the conditional use permit. On finding C2, I think it is definitely compatible when you have community facilities, commercial, multifamily residential surrounding this property. There's no doubt there is residential to the south, again, side, there is a sand wall, there is residential, obviously, to the north and to the east, but I think that's a distance away. I personally have an office on a busy street and close to a car wash, and I do not have, actually do not hear it very much at all, so parking is not an issue with car wash, and so I could definitely find C4, and I think they've handled it with the NDOT on the traffic. And with the noise, you're gonna have them, they're gonna be enclosed. I feel that all the findings can be made on this, and I really appreciate staff putting the conditional approval of the number four, which is the NDOT approval. That's the big concern, is traffic, and if NDOT's saying, hey, we're a go, we're fine, we're okay with the improvements, what's in front of us now is a conditional use permit for a professional office zoning that is commercial with, as a car wash. And with 30, you know, you look at 700 was thrown out a lot as average daily trips, peak hours, 35. I just don't think that's gonna be really significant with any other professional offices possibly, potentially going in there. We have something here now that I think I could make all the findings, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fueens. Any other comments or possible motion on this conditional use permit?
I'll find the motion, I will make one here.
Okay. Yeah, it sounded like you were close.
Yep, I'm getting there. All right, I move to approve the conditional use permit CU 19-0008, associated with PCN 19-0023, adopting findings C1 through C5, and the fact supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report, subject to the four conditions of approval as listed in the staff report. It's Commissioner Fueens.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Fueens. There's a motion on the table for approval. Is there a second on the motion?
Second, Mary Brock.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fueens for approval, we have a second by Commissioner Brock. Any comments or discussion on the proposed motion? I had a couple. I hate to disagree with my colleagues, and I especially don't like to disagree with staff on their recommendations, but I have a hard time making, finding C1 and C2. I appreciate the applicant making some design considerations. I think the square footage, the queuing distances, the access controls, you know, really make this a more compatible use than what was previously approved by the commission. I did not support that item, but I have a hard time with making finding C1 in our compliance with the comprehensive plan. You know, this site has been, has had a master plan land use designation of office professional, or we'll just call it office, for 15 years before our current comprehensive plan land use designation is assigned to C land use on it. I've said this in the past, you know, the elimination of that office professional land use and changing those land uses to commercial has really kind of set office development back in the city, and I really think it's time that we bring that back. But more specifically, I think if we're gonna get into the comprehensive plan and finding C1 and C1, I think if we're gonna take a, fundamentally change the land use through allowing... through allowing a conditional use on this property, from something that's an office to a commercial nature, it should really be a compelling justification. I think the past actions of this body in our master plan and previous zoning that's been attached to this property have designated this to be an office use. I hate to disagree with staff, but I think the, you know, the generic findings in, in compliance with the comprehensive plan of, you know, services can be provided, it's an infill project, it's a non-residential land use. You know, for this, we should have more compelling justification. I'd really like to see, if we're gonna make a land use change to get rid of office professional within the city, we should really be looking at, you know, how that affects, you know, goals like EV1, that's to grow the economy. EV2, that's attract new higher-paying jobs. EV3, that's attract sought-after employers into the city. I don't believe that the proposed conditional use does anything to advance these goals and therefore is not inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. I can't make finding C, C1. With respect to finding C2, I'm very concerned about, about the noise levels. I, I can appreciate the, the, the enclosures, but there was no information submitted on how the proposed sound levels from the, from the use would affect the adjacent, you know, office uses to, to the east. I, you know, I, maybe if there was a, there was a block wall, hours of restrictions, but I think with, without those commitments in, in the proposed motion, I respectfully cannot support the motion and will not be voting in support. Any other comments on the proposed motion? Okay, we, we've heard the motion from approval. All those in favor?
Chairman Carey.
Roll call.
May I? Yes, please.
Yeah, that, that's probably a good idea. It may be close, okay. Let's, let's do a roll call vote on this. Would you like Madam Secretary to call out the, the names? And we'll have each commissioner state their, state their vote for the record.
Commissioner Carey.
Nay.
Commissioner Reed.
Nay.
Commissioner Brock.
Yay.
Commissioner Blakow.
Nay.
Commissioner Fueens.
Yay.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
Nay.
Commissioner Peterson.
Nay.
Okay, so that was five to two? Okay, the motion has failed. Would the commissioners like to make another motion concerning this proposed conditional use application?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know that that's necessary.
Okay.
I think the motion to approve the conditional use permit failed, which means that it's a technical denial.
It's a technical denial, okay. All right. So thank you for that. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate the discussion from the commission. That concludes the hearing on PCN 190023. Move on to our agenda. I think we have a public comment. This is a final public comment opportunity. It's another general public comment opportunity. Would anyone care to make a general public comment at this time? I see none, I'll close the, oh, sorry, sorry Wesley.
Chris Griffin, 2701 Whittaker Road. I appreciate your thought in this item, the thoughts on both sides. Very good points made. It's great that we have a body that we can come before and express our, our concerns. How it could be, but it's nice if, you know, if the public were to be able to be aware of some of these things a little sooner. Both possibly would have been better prepared. I, I couldn't ask for, from my perspective, a better outcome, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that Wesley. We have another, come on, come on down.
George Lee, 3506 Brassie Drive.
I, I noticed in their depictions, they didn't show bike lanes. And I don't see any there. And I don't know that there are any there now. So they'd have to be added, which would add additional width, you know, required. Their, their drawing just didn't depict that, is what I was...
Okay, thank you, George.
Thanks for your deliberation.
Thanks for joining us. Any other?
A lot of it, and there are some things that are short.
Thank you, George. Any other public comment? Come on down, Charlotte.
Charlotte, 659. I rock way. I just want to say thank you because I feel like you've listened to everyone and you've probably saved some lives or possible horrible accidents as people come out of the road. So thank you for thinking about that, as well as having a building there that's not compatible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlotte. Okay, anyone else want to provide a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public commentary. We'll bring this to item number nine. That's comments from the commissioners. Does commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Brock.
Mr. Chair, I feel like we had this conversation at the last meeting. But I just want to say thank you to all the fellow commissioners and staff for this opportunity to serve our city. It's been very meaningful, and I'm proud to be amongst so many good citizens who care so much about what's going on. So thank you for the opportunity and good luck going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Brock. Any other comments from, from the commission? I, I had one I wanted to bring to the commission's attention. Since our last meeting, I wanted to inform the commission that the RTC board has approved significant transit service changes to, to Sparks. Starting in November, routes 26 and 25 will be affected. Route 26, that's the one that runs from downtown Centennial Plaza out to, down, down Prater, down to Northern Nevada Medical Center. And Route 25 is, is Centennial Plaza out to Reed High School and back. Under the approved service changes, Route 26 is completely eliminated. And Route 25 would end at McCarran and Prater. I say that those fixed routes would be, would be eliminated, but they're going to be replaced by a microtransit pilot program. And this is, as I understand, as, as explained to me, it's somewhat like Uber or a Lyft on-demand kind of service that would utilize the RTC access vans. Those are the 16 or 20 passenger vans. They're essentially going to take those vans, rebrand them, combine, combine the paratransit and this microtransit, it'll be door-to-door service. I bring this up, I, I have my own concerns as a, as a regular rider of routes 26 and 25, and my concerns about microtransit in general. But I bring this up because of, I think it's gonna have a really big impact on our comprehensive plan. You know, we, we put a lot of time and effort, and this commission has reviewed projects and has made certain findings in these areas that are affected by this, by this transit area. Because that fixed route, I'm, I'm concerned about the loss of, of that transit area. I know the staff did a, did a good job to try to bring those attend, to the attention of the RTC board. I think with, with the loss of this fixed route, and it's about a third of the fixed route service we have in Sparks, it's gonna be replaced with this microtransit pilot program. I think it's really gonna, gonna hurt our, our efforts. You know, we were doing transit-oriented development before. Now we're, now we're doing the mixed-use district policies. I'm really concerned about the impacts those are gonna have on our, on our code and, and our comprehensive plan. You know, just given the, the realities of transit funding in this area, I think there's gonna be more of these cuts coming to Sparks. And unfortunately, with those in the horizon, we probably should look at, at our comprehensive plan and perhaps our, our zoning code for that. But I just wanted to bring those, bring those comments on the record and bring those to the attention at this time. Any other comments from, from the commission? Okay, seeing, seeing none. Well, I'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:41 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.